And you are live, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Northborough. I have a little opening spiel for for remote meetings. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two Act, relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the Northborough Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This public, public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link posted on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will, as always, feature public comment. I will confirm the members are available and can be heard. Uh, let's see, Scott Rogers.
Present.
Julian Hirsch.
Present.
Jason Pro.
Present.
Kristen Wickstead.
Here.
We also have Town Administrator John Kader.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Liver.
Present.
Fire Chief Dave Parenti.
Present.
DPW Director Scott Sharpenchair.
Present.
We also have Northborough Cable with us, providing the technical backend to make sure that we can record and broadcast the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's get started. As always, first item on our agenda is public input for primarily for anything that's not on our agenda, as folks will be allowed to speak during agenda items. If there is anyone that wishes to speak now from the public, raise your virtual hand and I will recognize you. Give it another few seconds. Should anyone raise a hand? Go on once. Going twice. Oh, we have a hand. Susie Sislika. Susie, I'm pulling you in. Hi, Susie, are there? Hi.
Hold on just a minute.
Sure.
I have.
Having a hard time hearing you, Susie. Still don't hear you at all. No one else can hear Susie either, I take it.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Sorry, I dropped my earpad into a pile of laundry and I cannot find it, so I apologize about that. I had one question and I just wanted to call in as the Chair of the Northborough Community Affairs Committee and thank everyone for what might have been an emergency situation with the weather for the tree lighting. And I know that you guys had kind of mentioned during the last time that I came to see you about that, that maybe we would be getting rid of making a motion and having me come. And I do love to come in December and I would still love to come, but just because of what happened with the weather and Mitch and I trying to figure out the logistics and everything, if maybe you could discuss in the future, um, I that I'll just have a standing time to come in, end of November, talk about our year, and then maybe you wouldn't have to make a motion to close it. I don't know if that would work, but I.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, Susie. I think we may have lost you again, but um, yeah, I think, I think next time around, maybe we can think about a flexible way to do that. I think to formally close the road, we do need a specific date and time. Due to the, the weather that almost occurred the evening of the scheduled tree lighting, we, there was some, some brief discussion of, of dealing with that and we'll just, we'll, we'll be able, we'll come up with a good way of dealing with that in the future. So um, I know this is sort of a standing agenda item. I, I know Dya is watching this and it'll get put on a calendar for next November and we'll figure out what to do by then.
Yes, thank you, because I know, I know we were like, do we need to, you know, call an emergency board of selectmen meeting? It was just a lot, so I just wanted to thank everyone and just bring that up before I forget. And all of a sudden, it's November and we're going to make a motion again. Thank you.
Figure it out. Yep.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Sure, Happy New Year. While you're here, thanks, thanks as always for an amazing tree lighting event. A lot of fun.
Thank you. I called Mother Nature and she listened. She stopped the rain for me right beforehand.
Alright, thanks very much, Susie.
Thank you.
Alright, I don't see any other hands up, so let's get started with our meeting. Uh, first item on our agenda, uh, we've got a couple of sets of meeting minutes, December fifteenth and then December nineteenth. Something like to make a motion on that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Scott for the fifteenth. Is it?
Yes, the fifteenth.
The fifteenth, uh, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? And that amendment corrected that Julian wasn't able to attend that meeting. Um, I think the original draft said that she was there. Okay, any other discussion? Um, roll call vote, Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Abstain.
Jason Pro.
Aye.
And Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Okay, I also vote aye, vote unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes of December fifteenth approved, uh, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Julian, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor, Kristen.
Aye.
Julian.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor, meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much, everybody. Um, next up on our agenda, we have a couple of full-time police officers. Chief Liver, would you like to give us an introduction?
Uh, yes, I should have my two newest candidates waiting anxiously to chime in. And hopefully they got the memo.
Yeah, I've got James Anderson here and Matt York right here. So someone else already grabbed Matt, I think. Oh, nope.
Yep, there is.
How you doing?
Excellent.
There we are. Well, Mr. Chair, thank you. Always an enjoyable opportunity when it comes to appointing new police officers and watching people embark on their career. Uh, tonight, we have before you, uh, James Anderson. Say hi, James.
Hey, how you doing?
And, and uh, Matthew York, uh, for your consideration tonight, uh, to appoint as full-time police officers. Um, to cherish your well, they, having participated in the interviews, both candidates did extremely well. Um, they were impressive and a little bit about each. Um, James is a resident of Medway, Massachusetts, native rather of Medway, two thousand eighteen graduate Medway High School. Uh, he attended LaSalle College and he there a great obtained his bachelor's degree in criminal justice, which is our minimum educational level at this point in time. Um, while there, he was a Dean's List student for four semesters each at two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two. He was also an athlete student and he played lacrosse where he was also awarded Booker of the Year in the Great North, uh, East, Northeast, uh, sure, Athletic Conference, the Northeast Athletic Conference. Uh, he also interned at the Waltham Police Department. And that's James. Next, we have Matthew. Uh, Matthew is a native of Southampton, Mass, so he's from the four one three area vote and we won't hold that against him. And uh, he graduated from Hampshire Regional High School, same as James in two thousand eighteen. He attended Nichols College in Dudley, Mass. He also earned his bachelor's in criminal justice. He played while there, he played NCAA Division Two Baseball. And one of his chronic achievements while he was at Nichols was he successfully chartered and started the fishing club. Uh, he's also grew up, but spent a lot of time on his parents' farm, grandparents, rather. Uh, they have a five-minute ride down the street from where it grew up where they board horses and do horse trials. So if we ever start a mounted unit, we know who we're turning to, so. That's, that's Matt and, and James. Again, uh, they've completed all of the requirements necessary, uh, their drug screens, physical exams, their physical assessment ability, uh, physical ability assessments, uh, through the state H I D division. And they're both ready to go. They have both secured seats in the Lynnfield Municipal Police Academy, um, which starts on, um, January thirtieth. So basically in a little bit less than four weeks, they will be studying for the next six months and they'll be joining us amongst our ranks sometime in the end of June, beginning of July, where they'll begin a ten-week field training period. So they've got their work cut out for them. Uh, it's never pleasant to go to the police academy in the winter because there's lots of running and calisthenics and things in the outdoors. So I wish them well and if you appoint them this evening, they will both be reporting for duty tomorrow to get ready for the academy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Chief, for the introduction, James and Matt. Great to, to see you both again. Thank you very much for, for joining us this evening. Is there anything either of you would like to, to say or add before we formally deliberate and ask you any questions that we might have?
James, I would like to just say quickly, thank you for this opportunity and looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Just second that. I can't thank you guys enough for this opportunity and I'm more than excited to begin. Thank you.
We're, we're very excited to have you. It is, it is hard to find such qualified candidates and I know Chief Liver looks for the best of the best and we're very happy that he's joining you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Scott?
Yeah, gentlemen, just want to say welcome and thank you for choosing Northborough. We look forward to seeing you around town.
Thank you.
Jason.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, James and Matt, just thank you. Welcome to Northborough. Thank you for choosing Northborough. Uh, we appreciate it. We hope we provide a good opportunity for you here and we know that you'll be serving the community well. Uh, I do want to ask, uh, James, what, what position do you play in lacrosse?
Um, I was a lefty attackman.
And Matt, what position in baseball?
I played outfield, mostly left field.
Great. Just like to know. Thank you both very much.
Defics, I appreciate you clarifying that.
Yes, yes.
For the municipal baseball league.
Right, right. Pursuit of suspects, stuff like that. Want to, you know, somebody who's got a little bit of speed somewhere, right?
Alright, there are no other comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint James Anderson and Matthew York as full-time police officers effective January ten, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Julian. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Kristen.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Julian.
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, gentlemen. Welcome to Northborough.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. See you in the morning.
Don't be late.
Very good. I'm excited to, a couple more people applied. Alright, next up we have um, acceptance of the Massachusetts Office of Disability Grant for ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. Um, John or Scott, who would like to get started on this?
Scott can take this one.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is our second year of applying for this grant. The, um, Office of Disabilities offers grants to communities to help fund self-evaluations and transition, uh, transition plans. The ADA, um, has requirements for both of those documents. The self-evaluation process is, uh, an architect is hired, uh, evaluates the municipal buildings, grounds and parks, comes up with, um, uh, barriers for accessibility, whether it be audio, visual, uh, physical. Um, that's part of the evaluation process that culminates with, um, uh, the transition plan. The transition plan provides mechanisms to address those, um, those, um, issues in, in the different, uh, buildings and grounds. They can be simple operational changes, um, such as having, uh, staff go to doors and open doors for physical access to rooms, to actual physical improvements, uh, and construction. Uh, the grant amount was awarded this year in forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. We have a contract ready to engage with an architect to begin the work. This is one of the critical requirements, having these two documents, um, developed and accepted by a community in order for us to be eligible for construction grants. Um, construction grants could go toward interior, exterior improvements. Um, they could also, uh, help, uh, improvements to the website, for example, for visually impaired. Um, so there's a lot of opportunities here to, to address any barriers the community has. Again, this is our second application. We're happy that the, the award came through and we're looking forward to get the, the project underway, um, in the coming month and, um, hopefully have some, some documents ready for submission.
Thank you, Scott. Um, one quick question. What are the, the eventual construction-related grants? What are the scope, size of those grants that we might be expected to receive?
They can vary greatly. Um, you can get a relatively small grant for, um, like automatic door openers, for example, if we didn't have those. Um, you can get somewhat, uh, larger structural type grants for accessibility when, when you need ramp construction, railing installation. I've seen them used as matching grants on very large projects for elevators. I don't see that being one of our needs. Um, but my, my preference is to certainly get the list of, of everything so that we can start checking things off, whether it be with, um, in-house expertise, operational budgets, and then obviously some of the larger things go through, uh, go through the grant programs. It does open up quite a few funding doors for us, so it's a, it's a great award. Um, and there's a lot that can come out of it once the work is complete.
Thank you. Uh, questions or otherwise from, uh, board? Julian.
Well, Scott, this is great news and thank you for doing all that work and getting, you know, the, the grant. Um, but I'm, I'm thinking back to when we were doing, um, Assabett Park and members of the community who had mobility challenges, et cetera, asked that they be considered in the, in the process and the planning. To what extent do you, um, will you involve community members who will really use these, you know, these changes?
Well, the, the self-evaluation is conducted by, um, professional architects. There's no community involvement associated with evaluating accessible barriers at a building or outdoor facility. So there is no public input. The, um, the transition plan on how you, uh, eliminate those barriers temporarily or permanently address those barriers, again, that's, that's the, the actions of a professional architect and engineer, not public input. So I'm not, I don't see public involvement associated with a self-evaluation or transition plan.
But there might be public input on, um, on priorities.
Yeah, the priorities, again, but the most funding mechanisms, priorities are, are, are balanced. One, what can we do quickly and what do we have resources for? Where can we get grant funds for larger, uh, uh, projects? And what do we need? Do we need to go to a capital plan for it? Um, you know, public input on how to construct a concrete ramp and a railing. Um, I don't see there's a lot of need for that. If it's at a historic building and we have um, decorative railings and, and visual impacts, then that's, that's a different story. Um, the accessibility component of the playground had no public input need whatsoever. There's codes and requirements for us to be met, um, selection of the equipment, the colors, the layout, yes. Um, the fact that the surface needs to be accessible, the slopes need to be compliant and the, uh, uh, access portals need to comply with, um, you know, width and slope and, and edges. There's no public input for that. That, that's a regulatory requirement.
Okay, thanks. And thanks again for getting the grant.
It was, it was mostly Sean and, and Becca. I, I simply clicked the email button, so, um, they're the ones who did the work.
Well, thanks to your team.
You.
Right. Any other, uh, questions from the board? One other question, these are for, um, buildings and, and things that surround buildings, not sidewalks, for example, or crosswalks, correct?
That, that's correct. We have a, um, a separate wheelchair ramp, sidewalk evaluation, um, that is nearly complete now. So, um, this is separate of that, but it does include parks, um, and parking lots and things like that.
Great. We do have a hand up in the audience, Nicole Lomerson. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. I'm going to allow you to talk now. You could identify yourself and unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We do, thank you.
Okay. My name is Nicole Lomerson and I reside at sixty-four Fernbrook. I've been a Northborough resident for about six years and I am a wheelchair user, a full-time wheelchair user. And I would, I'm really happy this is happening, number one. But number two, I'm going to push back a little bit on this idea that input is not necessary from disabled people. And one of the examples I'm going to use is Assabett Park. There are some specific things and design choices at Assabett Park that would have been better had you listened to or invited comments from disabled people and parents of disabled children. Um, and so I will in no way, shape or form agree with this idea that regulatory stuff is somehow different and not needing a public input. Disabled people have been excluded since time immemorial, um, from the decisions that shape our lives and the decisions that make our communities accessible to us. I would really encourage you to rethink and bring some disabled people to the table to at least talk about priorities. And I would also encourage you, if, if you can't do it for this, that's fine, but there are architectural firms in the area that have disabled architects on staff and I would encourage you to look towards that, those firms. Um, because I think, you know, we can be a model for other towns. Um, and I personally don't like the idea of being excluded in my own community because these are going to be changes that are going to directly affect me. And I certainly have some ideas about priorities in terms of how I go about my business in this town and go to town hall and whatnot. And I think it's important for the board to hear from disabled people and also the architects. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Um, I think, um, point very, very well taken and I appreciate the input. I would suggest that maybe you, um, so we have your contact information. Uh, send an email to the Board of Selectmen's email address, which is available on the town website and we'll make sure that, uh, that the DPW has that, um, for, uh, for soliciting any, any feedback that, um, that, that they're able to, uh, to collect from you and, uh, maybe they could get some references to some of the architectural firms that you mentioned, um, that have a little extra expertise in this. I really, really do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
No, Mr. Chairman, I have communicated with, um, with Nicole in the past, specifically about Assabett Park and she participated in the, the, the process with the, the ad hoc committee we, we put together for it, so.
Excellent, very good. Becca, you had your hand up.
Yeah, if I could, I, I do also just want to remind the board that, um, this was a goal of the DEI Committee and a recommendation was to pursue and receive the grant. Um, the committee did hold the first meeting, um, last month. Um, and, uh, the award was, um, they were noticed of the award. Uh, and I do expect that the DEI Committee will be involved, um, as we move through this process. So that may be an avenue for us to have some public input if warranted.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much, Becca. I appreciate that. Um, back to the, uh, the grant. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to accept the Massachusetts Office on Disability Grant as presented by the Public Works Director Scott Sharpenchair and to approve expenditure of such grant by the Public Works Department pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Scott, seconded, I think, first by Kristen. Um, any other discussion? Alright, roll call vote. Um, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Julian.
Aye.
Kristen.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Um, Director Sharpenchair, thank you very, very much for moving this along and, uh, in pressing that magic email button and thanks to, to Becca and Sean and everybody else that, um, that made this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I look, look forward to seeing the end result of this.
Thank you.
Very good. Um, that concludes that item. Next on our agenda, we have discussion of the possible dissolution of the Groundwater Advisory Committee. Um, I believe, uh, Fred Litchfield is being brought in, correct? Bring him in as a panelist. Um, I want to set the stage on this just a little bit. This was an item, uh, requested by, uh, Board Member Scott Rogers. Um, following discussion, uh, of the Planning Board and a number of other boards on the possible dissolution of the Groundwater Advisory Committee, as it says, on the ten. And, um, we, we will eventually have the opportunity to meet with representatives of the Planning Board, um, if they proceed and, uh, and vote to request that this item be added to the warrant for the April Town Meeting. Thus far, that hasn't occurred yet, um, but I think, given the fact that we have a board, that there is at least some discussion about being discussed, about possibly being dissolved. I, I think it made some sense upon Scott's request to have a, a discussion about that. Uh, and maybe, uh, Fred can give us a little introduction as to what the Groundwater Advisory Committee does in its history um, and its prevalence throughout the state and we can take it from there. I, I apologize, Scott. Was there anything else that you wanted to add before I asked Fred to, um,
No, that's fine.
To go forward. Very good. Thank you.
Uh, good evening and thank you for the invitation to attend tonight, talk about the Groundwater Advisory Committee, one of my favorite topics. Um, I had prepared a memo, which I believe you all had in your package, uh, with a little bit of history, so I won't go through that. It's really not, uh, terribly comprehensive. Uh, the committee was created back in nineteen eighty-six at the annual town meeting in order to assist with review of projects in the groundwater overlay area. Uh, which is, for those who are not aware, uh, the areas of town that we use to protect our drinking water supplies, uh, both, uh, potential and, uh, former drinking water supplies. There are three areas. Area one is our most stringent and restrictive zone and area two is a little less restrictive and area three is our least restrictive, which is further from the wells and, um, allows, um, people to, to do more things in that area because of the distance to the wells and the, uh, impact on the aquifer is, is less. The Planning Board has, uh, discussed, uh, the Groundwater Advisory Committee's role on a number of occasions and is, at this point, feeling that there's some duplication of efforts and that perhaps the process of getting special permits through the town's, uh, land use boards could be streamlined a bit by eliminating the Groundwater Advisory Committee and letting me do the same work that I do for them directly for the SPGA or the Special Permit Granting Authority. Um, not quite sure what I can offer you for other explanation. I'm happy to answer some questions. If you have some specific questions about the role that they play or some of the projects, um, there is a representative of one of each of five different boards. So, uh, Scott is our chairman as a representative from the Board of Selectmen. We have one from the Planning Board, one from the Conservation Commission, one from the Water and Sewer Commission and one member of the Board of Health is also on the Groundwater Advisory Committee. Um, the Planning Board is holding a public hearing on January seventeenth to discuss some zoning amendments. Uh, there is, uh, going to be another public hearing later in, um, February, uh, I believe on February seventh, that will take up, uh, an amendment to the zoning bylaw regarding the dissolution, dissolution of the Groundwater Advisory Committee. Um, there was an attached to the original submission for the legal ad for the public hearing. Um, there was an attached to the original submission for the legal ad for the public hearing for January seventeenth. So it will uh it will come shortly after that. Um, so uh that said, I'm happy to answer some questions if you have some. And um, fire away.
Scott, you uh you brought this forward. I'll I'll give you the first shot if you have any uh any questions.
Yeah, absolutely. And so I bring it forward because of either my election to this board, appointment to um other boards and committees and commissions. So I end up representing in some way or being affiliated in some way with four of the six boards, committees and commissions that are that are associated with the the Groundwater Advisory Committee. So it's uh kind of in that that realm, right, seeing how uh that committee um either supports those uh special permit granting authorities or is supported by uh those other boards and committees and commissions that um yeah, want to want to make sure that any potential impact to the other BCCs is understood and considered as this moves forward. Since bringing it up, uh, we do have some drafted language that the Planning Director provided. And so that's uh ready for uh review at the next uh Planning Board meeting. Uh, that's what we'll likely see in the public hearing that happens on February in February, as Fred as Fred mentioned. So there's really um, you know, kind of two levels that I want to, you know, bring folks' attention to, right? A lot of discussion within the Planning Board and with some of the other um affiliated uh boards, like the Water and Sewer Commission and and uh Zoning Board of Appeals have already talked about this a little bit. And it's the tactical nature of of the uh applications as they come through. Um, probably for us, the most uh exemplar of that was thirty Forbes, right? Where we were we were reviewing the storage of chemicals as we look to renew uh or grant one of their licenses, right? So you've got on site uh so uh permits that, you know, might come through the ZBA or the Planning Board. You've got licenses that might come in front of the Board of Selectmen. Any of those involved in groundwater is an opportunity for Groundwater Advisory Committee to do some uh fieldwork. Uh, put that all together, review that bit as it comes forward. So that's an example, thirty Forbes of typical uh what's happening at the tactical level. At a more strategic level and more implicit um based on the composition of the Groundwater Advisory Committee is the connectiveness, uh the collaboration, coordination, the communication between uh permit granting authorities and the other boards, committees and commissions. Um, nowhere else in our municipal structure do you see how the Board of Health, the Water Superior, the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Board of Selectmen and uh ZBA, you know, although not officially mentioned, they're they're implied as well as the sixth BCC involved. Um, there's connected tissue. Um, there's more eyes on applications, the ability to cross communicate on those applications. So um I want to make sure that as folks review those potential changes in the dissolution of this one committee that we don't uh unduly erode or separate the connected tissue between these municipal bodies and and be the worst for it. Um, I think there's some ways to mitigate uh those bits. And I've had some discussions with the Planning Director throughout the course of the today today on that, you know, as that uh by law, proposed by law changes goes through, there might be some further adjustments. But I think what I want to just make sure folks consider is that uh we we run the risk of uh eroding some of the collaboration that happens between different boards, committees and commissions.
Thanks, Scott. Any other comments or questions from the board? Julianne?
Yeah, I have a question, um, a couple of questions actually for Fred. So um when when this committee started, were we on wells or were we on MWR?
Uh, we were on wells um back in nineteen eighty-six, as far as I know. I wasn't actually here then, but I believe that we did have uh wells. We went to MWR way water uh supply uh much more recently in the last six or seven years, I believe. Um, but the by the law requires us to protect our wells even as potential drinking water supply. So um that that's still important to to maintain.
So does this committee actually um look at, you know, like, like, look at reports of the wells that are assessed on a yearly basis? Like, how often are our wells checked?
No, that's handled by the Water and Sewer Commission and the DPW Director. And I'm I'm seeing that Scott's happy to jump in and explain that. This committee, the Groundwater Advisory Committee, reviews uh projects that are submitted to the town for approval um by private developers. Um, when they are falling within the groundwater, one of the groundwater overlay areas. And there are certain restrictions on different types of development, amounts of impervious cover, uh, volume of materials that can be stored onsite, whether it's inside the building or outside the building and how those are contained. So it's more of a another layer. Uh, the bylaw requires them to go to the Groundwater Advisory Committee for a recommendation. Again, they are an advisory committee only. They do not make a decision. They only make a recommendation to the Special Permit Granting Authority, which may be either the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Planning Board.
And and do the members of the Groundwater Committee, are they, do they go to classes or, you know, like, we get training opportunities and stuff? Do they get trained? I mean, this is kind of a technical thing and I it seems to me you'd probably need a a degree and grow some kind of conservation to.
Um, no, as far as I know, there are no classes for Groundwater Advisory Committee members. Um, the bylaw requires uh members of the various committees to to be appointed to the Groundwater Advisory Committee and to bring their experience and expertise from each of the boards that they sit on to the project to look at it as a whole. Um, I do the technical review and if, as recently discussed with the Planning Board and recently happened with the Algonquin Regional High School uh track expansion, uh, we asked for a peer review to talk about the technical aspects of that plan that was beyond my uh comfort level.
So basically, it's what Scott said is is the various um, the various committees kind of communicating with each other. But it really doesn't mean that when they vote on something, it's that that those members are experts in in groundwater.
No, the members are not experts in groundwater. They are members of the five different boards and bring their own experience and expertise to that board. I review the bylaw and the application to make sure that it meets the bylaw. Present my findings to the Groundwater Advisory Committee. They discuss it and then make a recommendation based upon that and their own experience to the Special Permit Granting Authority.
Okay, and just one more comment. Then when if if any um project ever goes to an appeal and the uh during the appeal, the the person says, well, groundwater approved this. That.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, the Groundwater Advisory Committee does not approve a project. They simply make a recommendation, the special permit grant, they don't even hold a public hearing. They hold a public meeting. Uh, the make a recommendation to the Special Permit Granting Authority, and they are the ones who issue the permit. They are the ones who issue a hold a public hearing and take comment from the public, and they are the ones who make the decision. So if there were an appeal, it would be to the SPGA's actual permit.
Yeah, and really what's happening from the from the Groundwater Advisor Committee, right, is based on their review and Fred's technical work and um like, like you picked up, Julianne, you know, the overlay of maybe expertise or experience from a Board of Health member. Um, really recommend additional conditions to be placed on the permit if it's approved. So it's it it's not a an up or down, yes or no. It ends up being, these are the additional considerations, these are additional cons uh conditions that that are requested to be placed on uh the as part of the the project.
Julianne, did you uh complete your your questions?
Thank you.
Sure. Um, I have a question, Fred. Um, in nineteen eighty-six, when the town created this committee, did the uh position that you hold exist to town engineer position as far as you know?
Um, it did.
It did.
It did. Um, I bel- I the previous town engineer who arrived before I did started here, I believe, in nineteen eighty-three. And he was here throughout the process of creating the committee. As I outlined in the memo, there was some discussion at the state level to uh give town some money or uh some other resources to help protect some land around their drinking water supplies. And um ultimately, the town tried to get ahead of that curve to try to make themselves put themselves in a better position to get some grant money if possible. Ultimately, um, not sure what happened with the whole program. All I can tell you for sure is the town did not get any money uh to buy land or to uh create the bylaw. So they went ahead on their own, created this bylaw and went to town meeting. I can tell you that from the records I have, it was a a two-year process. There were several revisions outlined in the file that I have uh before it actually went to town meeting for approval in nineteen eighty-six. It did start somewhere in late nineteen eighty-three, early nineteen eighty-four.
Thank you, Fred. Uh, any other questions from uh for board members? I've got a couple more since we're there. Um, I don't, I I've heard secondarily, and I don't think it was in your memo um about how many other towns in Massachusetts have currently a groundwater advisory committee?
Um, I did not uh do that research. I don't know for sure how many of the three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns actually have a groundwater advisory committee. Um, I believe most have a groundwater uh bylaw similar to ours. Maybe not exact or as comprehensive as the one that we have. Um, but uh some members of the Planning Board have indicated their research indicated there's only one other community that has a uh groundwater advisory committee or something similar to it. But again, I did not do that research, so I can't say for sure.
Thanks, Fred. Um, yeah, from my perspective, the most important thing in any change is to evaluate whether it adequately protects the groundwater. Um, I'd want to make sure that if we consider any change that uh that that's paramount, that's critical. Um, I know uh, you know, Fred as being the the technical staff in either case. Uh, it is the town engineer's expertise that leads credence to uh to that process rather than um whether there be any other committee involved. But I I think it's worth everyone thinking about, would the change be a net positive or a net negative or neutral in the grand scheme of things? Um, secondarily, I always like to see um property owners and property developers have a simpler time rather than a harder time going through the application and permitting process. If there is an opportunity to remove one committee that they must appear before without risking groundwater quality, then um I I think it's worth considering that. But um I haven't made up my mind. I'm waiting for the Planning Board to finish their process and uh as I said, we will have that discussion again. Anybody else have anything else before we uh we close this one out? Kristen? And then Scott.
Um, yeah, I guess one other thing, I did read the information and I, I mean, obviously the Planning Board is seriously considering this. But didn't they ask the ZBA also, what did the ZBA say? Does?
I believe that the ZBA concurred with the Planning Board that the uh the process would be uh sufficiently maintained if the committee itself um didn't exist anymore. Uh, the bylaw wouldn't change other than the committee would not be in existence and the per applications that come before the committee would be forwarded uh to each of the boards and committees who are represented on the Groundwater Advisory Committee. So as to maintain the ability for them to make comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, to follow up with, if I could on that, um, yeah, so you've got uh in a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, there was consensus amongst those two boards uh to move forward with dissolution. There was a discussion with the Water and Sewer Commission uh that was that was generally met with with uh agreement there. Uh, we have a Groundwater Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow. Uh, it'll be a topic of discussion uh within the committee itself. Conservation Commission is on Thursday uh where it'll be uh reviewed with that commission and then Board of Health on next Tuesday uh likely to cover the Board of Health. So as we get uh to uh the seventeenth, where uh zoning bylaws will begin their public hearing process with this one destined to be discussed on in February seventh. We'll have gone through and had the discussion amongst all the affected uh boards, committees and commissions. So we should have that, the blocking and tackling done there. Um, there was a second part of what you said, Kristen. Oh, oh, that was so the 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 continue to include the other boards, committees, commissions, commissions in an application going forward. That was the nature of my discussion with the Planning Director today in that um, the the um proposed language kind of implies that we would get copies directly of every application. Uh, and and for a moment, I thought it was actually that we would receive explicitly a copy rather than we wouldn't see it unless the Groundwater Advisory Committee, you know, bumped it up to the Board of Selectmen because there was something important that that would be uh impact us. Um, it's ambiguous in the language at the moment. It's probably that's going to be the discussion over the the next few days of of what what does that actually mean in terms of continuing to forward those applications on to those BCCs? Um, it's not clear exactly that that the procedure for that and would would we be explicitly alerted to an application in the groundwater uh overlay districts or not? And so that's that's something that um I'll be I'll be working with, you know, discussing during the public hearing or in the background with the Planning Director and the Planning Board.
Thanks. And any last comments or questions? Fred, thank you very much for the detailed explanation and your time.
Thank you, Fred.
Uh, you're you're welcome and uh Happy New Year. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I just saw a hand up from the audience, Lisa Mocelli. Uh, if you have any any brief comments, I I would ask again to remind everyone that we're not formally considering this this evening. Uh, we're not going to be taking any vote on this tonight because the Planning Board hasn't taken any former action, formal action themselves. Um, Lisa, if you could unmute yourself and identify yourself.
Uh, good evening. Hi, Lisa Mocelli, thirteen Maple Street. Um, I've been watching several of the meetings go by and I'm I'm a little confused now. I just wanted to double check on a few things. Is the groundwater is uh is the purview for groundwater under the BOS or under the planning board?
Want me to answer that?
If if anyone has a has an answer, sure.
Yeah, right. So the Groundwater Advisory Committee is formed by those other boards, committees and commissions. Certain projects will be submitted to that permit granting authority that might become from front of the ZBA might come in front of the um Planning Board. Or like we saw in thirty Forbes, although it didn't involve the Groundwater Advisor Committee at first, it was a license renewal uh to the Board of Selectmen. So depending on the project, uh, the the licenser grant uh permit granting authority might be one of those uh bits. There's other scenarios that would bring the Board of Health uh in line for a septic-based system uh and likewise for the Conservation Commission. So depending on the project, depending on what permit is being uh uh requested, it could go in front of any one of those boards, committees and commissions.
And would still, my understanding, it would still go in front of those same boards, committees and commissions.
Yeah, dissolve, yeah, dissolving the committee would the the there'd be no change to the body that would be granting the permit or the license or whatever.
Great. Very good.
Are you? Yeah, well, I don't know. Jason's ask answering the same question?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Jason. I didn't see your uh your hand go up. Lisa, I'm gonna I'm gonna go ahead and bring you out because we're talking, we have a little board discussion going on now, but but I'll recognize you again.
Actually, I think I'm being responsive to Lisa's question. I think Lisa was asking which board uh is the authority for establishing or appointing, or in some sense, the Groundwater Advisory Committee? And the answer to that is it's the Groundwater Protection Bylaw itself that does that. It's not strictly speaking under the purview of any other board or committee. It's the bylaw that establishes Groundwater Advisory Committee and the proposal that's coming forward is to uh revise that bylaw to eliminate the committee.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just have to say I'm more confused now than before.
But I would I would suggest um po- possibly asking the Planning Board at maybe one of their meetings uh for a little bit more clarification as they're they're leading the charge on this. Scott, you have your hand up now. I'll leave Lisa in in case.
Yeah, I'll thank you as a chairman. It's identified in the zoning overlay district of the bylaw, so it's a zoning um bylaw. So that would be under Planning Board Town Meeting. Town Meeting is what it meant zoning bylaws.
Okay, so so it is under the Planning Board, not the Okay, so so it is under the planning board, not the BOS, the purview because of that.
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's it's town meeting makes the decision as to what the bylaws would be. The zoning bylaws fall underneath the planning board as far as um uh who leads the effort and holds the public hearings regarding their changes.
Okay, and but but they haven't they haven't completed their 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 work, correct?
That is correct.
Alright, so I'm just, it just seems like we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here tonight.
Absolutely not. So it's it's been drafted uh for in preparation for the public hearings that that happened. So the the work has proceeded exactly in order as it should.
Alright, thank you very much, Lisa. Hey, oh, I see Kerry Martinic here. I Kerry, I don't need to remind you that uh the planning board hasn't voted on this yet, but if you have something you'd like to add to it, go ahead and unmute and identify yourself, please.
Sure, Kerry Martinick, sixteen Hemlock Drive. Um I'm also a chair of the planning board. So I would argue that this is under the purview of the planning board as are the zoning bylaws, although it's voted on at town meeting. The planning board is the only board that brings zoning recommendations to town meeting. So if there is confusion over that, I would urge us to clarify that with town council so that we all have the understanding of the right purview and can move forward in a productive manner. But I I do want to make that clear that this is a zoning bylaw matter and and planning board is the only board that brings zoning bylaws to town meeting. And of course, a citizen petition could be made as well. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Kerry. Okay, before we close this out, any other uh comments or questions from the board?
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. Uh next up on our agenda, discussion and vote on changing the name from the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Um I asked for this to be uh put this on the agenda. Um we've had some uh broad discussion of this item over the past few months that I've been on the board, and I know um it occurred once or twice in prior terms. Um I thought as we are approaching town meeting, this might be an opportune time to consider placing it onto the warrant and um and getting some direction from John as to ways that we can um can make this happen if if the board is so inclined. Um John, did you have anything you wanted to add? Are you included a a detailed memo as to the process in our packet?
Just just for those at home maybe who are watching in terms of the process, um you know, this is something that has occurred in a number of communities across the the Commonwealth. And so uh the best process um in accordance with uh town council would be to submit a uh a special act. Uh basically, we reach out to our legislative delegation, ask them to sponsor a special act to modify the town charter for this particular purpose. Um the big piece that um council is looking at uh making sure that would be let me back up. Um some communities don't have a charter. Some communities have a bylaw uh that's your enabling legislation for how your government is essentially set up. We have arguably the most formal, which is a charter. So that needs to be amended uh by the legislature. So uh a limited special act just for this purpose is something I think they've seen. Um one of the things that uh council identified was uh once you make uh that change to the charter, there's then a ripple effect throughout the entire town code. The town code consists of the charter, the bylaws, the zoning, the regulations, everything. And so everywhere within the town code, this change would need to occur. So one of the things that I discussed with council was uh drafting the special act legislation to allow uh that to occur without having to go back to town meeting uh to seek a series of um uh warrant articles that would basically accomplish the the name change. So he seems pretty uh confident that that is the uh proper approach. Um this evening, uh the recommendation this evening is the board is uh inclined to do this would be to take a vote to uh place this on the warrant and to base basically authorize me to work with council to uh move forward drafting the legislation, reach out to our legislative delegation uh and get it on the upcoming um uh on the upcoming docket uh for uh for the legislature. So that would be the process and um really this evening, it really all the board needs to do is decide is if this is something they'd like to go through uh and do. The other pieces I did uh mention is there is no, I I don't have a cost estimate uh today in terms of what it would cost to make these changes. Uh if we keep it very simple to just a sort of fine replace, um we work with a a complication company, a general code that maintains our code. So every time we go to town meeting and there's an update to a bylaw or a regulation, uh we pay them to update the um town code, which is also, as you know, maintained on the website. So um we're getting a quote from them as to what that would uh entail, assuming that the special act uh would allow us to authorize us to make all those changes, working with a vendor that currently updates our town code to make those changes. Uh the only little thing is, uh I did just uh touch base with council as well uh as to whether or not it would require any town council review, and that's something that we're looking at as well. We want to make sure, yeah, because it has, you know, legal implications um that somebody other than the complication company is verifying that the appropriate changes have, you know, have taken place and that there's no unforeseen issues that uh that would come up. So I'm in the process of getting uh some uh cost estimates for the uh complication uh work as well as any town council review that might take place. So uh but it's a it's it's a hopefully a fairly straightforward uh processor. So reaching out to our delegation. We've done, you know, um some some special uh legislation in the past. So this isn't anything that's, you know, overly complicated.
I'll add that I've had informal discussions with our uh our delegation over the last few months as they have asked me what interesting things might be coming forward from our town. And uh this this came up in discussion and they all um have have stated, at least informally, support for doing this. Um and I I don't know the exact number of towns that have gone through this change, but I've read a couple of times that more than a third of towns in Massachusetts um have changed from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So that's, you know, somewhere in the hundred range of towns and um so we're not breaking any new ground here. Um any any questions or comments? Uh I saw Kristen's hand up a millisecond before Scott's.
Ladies first, right? So um I think it's great that we're voting to initiate this process tonight and I think it's time Northborough um joins the twenty-first century and uses a gender neutral term for a board that has um all kinds of people on it and might in the future have all kinds of people on it. And also, um I think it maybe isn't a surprise that informally our um local representatives and senator are um supporting it because they are all women, which is great. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Kristen. Scott?
Yeah, um certainly in support of this. Glad you found John a, you know, a simple approach to uh not have to, you know, completely upend and and recodify everything. So if it can be a simple change like that, easy to implement. Um I try to say select board as as much as I can. So I I find myself using it. So yeah, seems uh seems like a no brainer.
Julian?
So one of the um, one of the things we have to acknowledge also is that the MMA has has accepted this as a change of our name and that's our professional organization, right? And um and I've heard the governor refer to select boards, not selectmen anymore. So I it's it's a necessary change. But regarding the cost and the um looking at the town charter, what didn't we discuss before the pandemic uh re re looking at the charter again and recodification, I think you called it, John?
Yeah, so to the chair, if I may. So um one of the things I talked about, it shouldn't be any surprise. There there isn't generally neutral language throughout the bylaws and and the code in general. It's very common. Um so one of the things that I had talked about a while back was doing this in conjunction with potentially a recodification project, which is basically an updating of the bylaws. We have a number of particularly administrative bylaws that are are uh old and outdated. Um a lot of them have been superseded by state statute or federal regulations. And so um you know periodically, that's a it's a significant undertaking. I've done it in two towns, um uh two private towns that I've worked in. It takes the better part of a year of a dedicated person going through and and really just cleaning up the entire code. Uh it's just, it's no different than in in the state statutes, you know, you still, you know, if you looked at the state statutes, you still have to stop and discharge a weapon if you're driving a automobile at an intersection so you don't startle a horse. You know, there's all sorts of old things on the books. We have the same thing here. Essentially, what happens is once it's superseded, it just becomes irrelevant and it gets ignored. Um but there are, you know, there isn't gender neutral language. One of the things I did when I worked in um in Chompsford uh was to change all of the language throughout the entire code to gender neutral language. So that that that's um that's what we're we'd be talking about. That is a very um, you know, that's a significant undertaking. It's it's, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in the better part of a year. Um so that was a that was the discussion that we had that you're probably recalling. And and I think the comment was, you know, probably that would be a good time where we would do a project like that to clean everything up at once. The special act um is sort of like a just a a precise in and out and just deals with this specific issue without having to um to make it overly complicated. So um and I think that legislature is grown accustomed to uh doing this now. It's not uh it's not something that's unique. Um special acts can take quite a bit of time to make their way through the legislature, depending on the nature, but I think this one is one that uh shouldn't garner much um uh controversy, I would hope.
Can I ask one more question about that? So this project, is this something an intern would be able to do for us or?
No, no, these are legal documents. You you don't want an intern doing find and replace with your town charter. Um this is uh again, there's a codification service that maintains our code. We would work with them and town council. I should mention, when if you do a, if you were to do a whole recomplication, you're going through cleanup all your bylaws, you still hire a company that specializes in that, but you also still need town council to review everything. And oftentimes, it requires multiple layers of approvals by boards and committees and ultimately town meeting. Uh but no, this would be done by the uh codification company, the company that has our code in electronic format, and then to be verified uh to some degree by town council that it was done correctly and properly in accordance with special act.
Yeah, generally towns try to uh to go through the recodification process every ten or fifteen years, I think. Um I have been through it once uh when I served on a board in another town. And it it is, as John describes, a a very lengthy and laborious process that you need experts to go through. It is something we should do. Um it would have been great if it was done and and the select board change was part of that. It's not um you know, we haven't started that process um for the whole recodification. That's, you know, it's something I would like to see us consider in the future, but is is beyond the scope of what we're talking about here. Um any other comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to include on the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant an article proposing authorization of a petition to the legislature for a special act amending the town charter to make the Board of Selectmen gender neutral by changing the name Board of Selectmen to Select Board and to authorize the amendment of town bylaws to reflect this change.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. I see a hand that went up in in uh the audience, but I'm gonna ask the board first if there are any other additional comments on the motion. Okay, there being none. Uh Carter Brannon, I'm going to bring you in. If you could um unmute yourself and identify yourself and let us know your uh your thoughts.
And in twenty-two Sherlin Drive, um I just wanted to say, um I you know, as a as a kind of young person, I appreciate the board's efforts to uh make, you know, have discussions about gender neutral language um and gender neutrality and inclusive um language, I think. That's something that's important to me and a lot of other people in town. Um although I I would say, I I do want to say that there does seem to be something, I think, valuable about keeping the name Board of Selectmen that should at least be sort of um mentioned that I think not or keeping the older uh name kind of has a um quaint, traditional sort of uh aspect to it that I think um would be in a way lost by uh you know, changing um the names of the boards. It's a kind of historic New England title that um I think there there are some people, there there might be some controversy in losing it. I would hope it is not controversy about the kind of sexist connotations it may hold. Um but I would suggest that um rather than changing it to select a board if we would, the town would consider um different names that kind of allow for a um sort of uniqueness to Northborough that might have a standout um from other towns why to kind of retain the sort of modern um gender neutrality and inclusivity while respecting um some of the more traditional uh aspects. My idea would be to rename it to something like the Board of Select rather than Select Board, um which I think might kind of be a compromise traditionalism and um the necessary modern gender neutrality. Thanks.
Thank you very much for the input, Carter. Um I'll I'll speak for myself that when I first started to uh to hear, it was a number of years ago, of towns changing their names to Select Board. It doesn't roll off the tongue, at least to me, in the same way that Board of Selectmen does. I appreciate um some of the comments there, but ultimately, this this has become the standard. As um I think it was you, Julianne, mentioned that uh the the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, their subgroup used to be called the Massachusetts Board of Selectment Association or something along those lines, and they've changed it since to Massachusetts Select Board Association. Um they it is, it is the standard. I think if we if we came up with something unique, even if we thought it was a little bit better, that might confuse um uh vendors, attorneys, um people in other towns that have to deal with us. Is my concern there. Um Julianne?
Yeah, I just want to say to Carter that I I tend to agree with him also about um you know, keeping some of the history of the name, but but it's it the the process has moved along so fast now that that name is is what everybody's using and um does expedite things. So I I appreciate his comment.
Thank you. Alright, we have a motion and second on the table. Again, again, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Um any other discussion? All those in favor, please uh say aye. Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Um thank you very much, John, for doing the work to uh to bring this forward. Um sure, it sounds like we all really appreciate that. Next up is we have review of the updated bore board committee or commission application form. Um Kristen, do you want to uh walk us through a little bit of the changes from our last meeting?
Sure. Um so basically, uh we we had some conversation about some things and I Diane and I went back and forth a few times and then Julianne read it again and um then we fixed a couple more things. Um and this is what we came up with finally. Um and I thought it was really nice of Diane to include the previous application so people can compare um everyone who's reading the packet. So I thought, I mean, I didn't ask her to do that. So three cheers to Diane for being good at her job. Um so um the only thing that Jason had talked about that we tried, I tried to squeeze it in and it just was super awkward was the mention of, you know, that if you're applying for municipal code and bylaw and or ZBA, um the town meeting question would have it would have been nice to be able to get it in there. Um but there was a couple reasons that we didn't. One of them still asks about town meeting, right? Are you familiar with the annual town meeting in April? Have you been able to attend? And then there was the note, you will still be considered and not disqualified if you do not regularly attend town meeting. Because um Because um, there is the concern that I I I didn't know this, but town meeting isn't a thing everywhere. And since we live in a time when people are moving to Northborough from places far away, like states where they don't have town meeting, oh, gasp, um, like I didn't know that, but I have since met some people through the interview committee, actually, who they're like, this is wild. You know, you guys are, the way you run your town is is very um, different from where I grew up. So maybe they're relatively new in town and haven't kind of discovered town meeting yet. Um, but maybe they have expertise that would still very much qualify for them for those two committees. Um, and and then also, there was another, there was one other thing besides just people coming from other places, um, and or just having moved to town fairly recently, I guess, was the other point. So we didn't squeeze that one thing in. I did try. Um, but otherwise, I think I made all the recommendations that people suggested.
Thank you, Kristen. Any uh, comments or questions from the board? Julianne, then Jason.
So it um, a a person applying for municipal code and bylaw or zoning board, if they don't go to town meeting, it's not gonna disqualify them anyway. It's something that is is an interesting fact about them, but I I do we agree on that? I mean, it's not like a prerequisite that we have to go to town meeting to apply for zoning board.
I think it would be unusual, and I imagine the uh, the interview committee as well as our board um, might want to find some compensating value uh, in that application, particularly municipal code and bylaw, and maybe just a little bit less so zoning board. Um, eh eh, each each committee varies as far as its relationship with town meeting, and some boards and committees have relationships with other boards and committees, but not necessarily with town meetings. So I think it, you know, it's gonna vary based upon the committee they're applying to, as well as the individual applicant.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Um, Jason?
Uh, no, same same point. Nothing, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Kristen? And then Scott?
Yeah, I did also mean to add that um, I think whoever's on the interview committee every year needs to really consider what board and committee they're interviewing for. All interviews are not alike, and you do need to prepare your questions for certain ones. And I think that's a really good point of that. That's a very important question for those two boards.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I think um, you know, the kind of the intent of the questions were to get an idea, the level of engagement, you know, prior engagement, whether, you know, attendance at town meeting or working with other boards, committees, commissions. So I think I think the rewrite, you know, sounds pretty good, right? What we're trying to do is is get a feel for uh, how how engaged they've been or or are are going to be, you know, what what has been their background in volunteer service, either with the town or engaged with 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 some of the issues in town. So this 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 update reads well to me. I think I think that's good in that respect. I had I had one thing that crossed my mind. I don't I don't know if I'm proposing a change, but the uh, I'm thinking back to one application we had. This is up at the um, up the very top where you say, ask them which board committee commissioned their desired, and then it's, you know, um, we say if more than one, please commit, complete one application for each. That's that's great. Uh, I think we had um, an application that the person didn't do that, and they tried to slam, you know, three different positions onto one application. Um, so it just made me think of that again, that scenario where we did have somebody do it a three and one, and it really did them a disservice because there was the no room to really distinguish themselves of why this committee for that one and why. So um, I think that still stands out as I reread it again. I I'm I'm kinda doing a a live uh, live thought here that uh, we are saying if more than one, please complete for each. So that's got that covered too. Not a change, but just made me think that uh, that prior one we had, Kristen, where there was like a a three and one, and it kind of left us without a lot of information on any. Tough, looks, looks good. I I think we can move forward with this.
Very good. Um, I'll also add, this is a a really a great update. Um, it I think makes the application uh, more inviting and friendlier to a wider variety of applicants, which is something I think we're all interested in. And um, we have, you know, quite a number of vacancies on some important boards, committees and commissions, and uh, it it, I know from experience, some people will look at, look at the old one and maybe think it was not for them because of some of the questions. So I think we've we've clarified this quite a bit. So I I really appreciate the work that the interview subcommittee did in um, in updating this. Thank you. Um, assuming there are no further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to update the board committee and commission application form as presented this evening.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Scott first. Um, any other comments or questions? Scott?
I did a quick look up, twenty-two existing vacancies. Uh, so if anybody is interested in serving the community, please go to your website. Uh, you'll see under the information place, uh, under vacant terms on the different uh, BCCs that have openings.
Since you mentioned that, I I will throw one out there. That's that's always been near and dear to my heart, which is the Cultural Council. Um, it's a it's a really important and fun committee. They have to have five. So uh, the way the state law is written, that after six years of serving on the Cultural Council, you have to take a year off. And I believe there are two members that are expiring, um, not not biblically, but expiring in terms of their membership uh, this this spring and can't continue for at least a year. And if we drop below five in the membership, we do not get the state grant. So um, I would encourage anyone that might be interested in the arts and culture in Northborough to consider applying. It's a it's a great committee. In any town, it's a really great committee in Northborough. Really, really, really good people doing great things. Um, and I'm sure we could all pick on a number of committees that we like, but I I wanted to throw that one out there since Scott brought up the vacancies. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Again, thank you very much, everyone, for uh, for moving this along, uh, Kristen, Julianne, and and Diane. Um, reports. Uh, let's see. Uh, Kristen, do you have any reports tonight?
I do. Um, okay, so I have traffic and safety ideas on my brain, and one of them was a recent email um, from Carrie Martnik, actually, the planning board uh, chair about the post occupancy study from Amazon. Um, and to find out what the status of that was, because she didn't seem to know. And then I realized I have, we haven't talked about that in a long time. So if we could get an update on that soon, that would be great. Um, from John and Scott. Um, and then um, oh, I got a letter right before Christmas from a resident named um, Wayne Cardwell, who um, is also a wheelchair user, lives on Leland Street, and um, so not too far from where I live. So I was very familiar with the areas that he was talking about. And he asked me actually to um, share the letter with the selectman, the DPW director, chief of police, traffic committee, and town planner. So um, I'm gonna share some of it here, and then I can scan it in and email it, or I can bring it into Town Hall. I'm not sure the best way to do that. But um, he says he's a newcomer to Northborough, and um, he uses a wheelchair all the time, and he um, he's he's a very busy guy, and he's out and about. He lists lots of places he goes in his wheelchair. And he said, um, but this this is the paragraph that really struck me because I don't use a wheelchair. I've never had to use a wheelchair. And I've heard Scott Sharpentier talking about pooling on sidewalks, and I never really understood why that was a big deal. And until I got this letter from Mister Cardwell with photographs, which I I can hold up in a minute, but I I don't think they'll show very well on Zoom. But he said, it is dangerous for me to travel along um, some of the streets in Northborough, which he had mentioned earlier, around his uh, neighborhood. Any bumps, irregular curbs, broken and or undulated surfaces, parking vehicles on the public way and crosswalk, pooled water, ice, and poorly removed snow caused me to take great chances with my safety. Yet my mental health needs to be addressed. I can't stay in my house day in and day out, nor should I have to. And I just thought, like, that really helps me understand what it's like to be an active person who uses a wheelchair. So I just really wanted to share that with with all of you tonight in the meeting. And I thought it was kind of a nice coincidence that we had another resident um, who uses a wheelchair tonight call in, Nicole, um, about something totally different. But anyway, I um, he says if I were to fall over or slip or get stuck, there is no way I can help myself to safety. I don't think I am just advocating for myself. There are many persons with disabilities who also depend on our public ways to live their lives. So anyway, those are my um, I just, I really want to share that tonight. So and I appreciate him sending me that letter. Um, another um, traffic and safety related idea um, I had for this report was I was reading the Globe, the Boston Globe recently, and there was an article about a new law Governor Baker signed right before he left office, um, requiring drivers to stay at least four feet away from vulnerable users off the of the road when passing them. The law also requires cyclists to use rear red lights, um, large state vehicles to have backup cameras and other safety features installed, and gives municipalities the ability to petition to change speed limits on state-owned roads. So I think that would mean Route twenty for us. So I wanted to ask Chief Liver what he thinks about this law, and I hope he had a chance to see um, to read about it, and what he thinks that might mean for the safety of our town roads. Can I can I have him as a special guest in my report?
If if she the chief would like, of course.
Well, I did uh, review it. Uh, I think that the crux of the legislation is that it defines vulnerable users basically for the first time. Some of the law, uh, some of the statute really doesn't change existing laws, or it 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 actually supplements them, maybe fortifies them a little bit. You've always had to stay clear of pedestrian or a vulnerable user, but it never defined a wheelchair or a uh, like a skateboard. I personally have an issue with that. They just don't belong on a road. But uh, this legislation does make them a vulnerable user um, on public ways. So um, other than that, um, the ability to petition the state for reduced speed limits, uh, be very interested to see how that plays out. Uh, so uh, yes, it's uh, anything is a help. Um, it's basically uh, looking at it, my, it it's something that uh, bodes well for um, placing liability if there's to be a pedestrian accident or a vulnerable user um, is the victim of a motor vehicle uh, collision with a with a motor vehicle. Uh, because then part of the investigation would be, were they utilizing the safety requirements required by the statute, were they four feet away uh, and and things like that? So it's uh, something that's uh, needed. Um, but as with all laws, they're only as good as the public education that goes along with it and the enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right. Well, and it did say um, it will start to be part of the curriculum of the driving schools. So that's good. But um, I also was thinking we had a resident who was clipped by, he was riding his bike on Route one thirty-five in the like, in the summer.
I read that report. Yeah, he was actually brushed by a tractor trailer truck while he was riding on the side of one thirty-five down by Ellsworth Park. I'm sure that was a very frightening uh, ordeal. So that was the case where, in this particular instance, the law does say that uh, it actually clarifies to motors now that you can actually drive into the opposite lane of traffic to maintain the four feet around a bicyclist or someone in a wheelchair or on a scooter or a non-motorized scooter, other uh, skateboard, only if it's safe to do so. So basically, the law now requires, you just got, it's it's like the old statute about passing a horse. You really can't go through unless the the rider says it's okay to do so. So um, yeah, that's 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 a change. So.
So that, yeah, that made me think of him and his scary situation. So I thought that was a, that was a good thing. So thank you, Chief Liver. Um, so my, oh, oh, Scott?
Scott, you have something to add?
Yes, um, through the chair. Uh, Kristen, you had asked about the post occupancy study at um, three thirty, three fifty Bartlett Street. That work was completed in December of twenty twenty-one. Uh, it's posted on the town's website under the traffic safety um, link, and it was also presented to the board in February of twenty twenty-two.
So I wonder if maybe um, the chair of the planning board was talking about something else, and I misspoke, I referred to it um, by the wrong name. I should have looked at the email more carefully before I said my report, but I'm pretty sure whatever it was she was referring to, she hasn't seen it yet. So anyway, I'll figure it out. I'll figure out what I was trying to talk about, and I'll I'll email you.
Okay. All right, thank you. I've been helped.
Okay, so I just have one more thing. I just have a quote, and it's actually from the Globe article. Um, about the law, he says, uh, this this one person that they interviewed that this is a big step forward. It will reduce the probability that someone will end up under the wheels of one of those big swinging truck trailers. So I would like to think that's that's true. Okay, thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, Jason, do you have any reports this evening?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, I just want to mention that uh, Saturday morning, a group of us uh, took the tour of three of our uh, Northborough, uh, well, two of our Northborough K-8 schools, and then the sports complex at the uh, Algonquin Regional High School, uh, basically joining the superintendent and a couple members of the school committee and uh, town administrator, the chair of this board uh, was present. Um, Kristen was present for part of that as well. And so we uh, visited uh, uh, the Z School as the first stop on the way, uh, then moved on to Peaslee Elementary School uh, to see that uh, for contrast. And uh, and then, as I mentioned, the sports complex, which is the subject of a significant capital uh, proposal uh, for renovation. So uh, uh, that was a very informative uh, along the way. Um, appreciate the uh, the efforts of the respective facility managers uh, who accompanied us and pointed out all of the uh, interesting uh, uh, capital uh, issues uh, to consider and look at. Uh, and then second, I just wanted to note the passing of uh, Jerry Bork. Jerry was a member of American Legion Post two thirty-four. Uh, I'm sorry to say that uh, Jerry is just one of several members of Post two thirty-four who have passed away in recent months. Uh, but Jerry, I'm particularly familiar with because uh, he was essentially our uh, master ceremonies on our annual Memorial Day parade, and we basically walked that uh, tour with him uh, for a number of years preceding. So uh, condolences to the family and uh, to the members of Post two uh, two thirty-four for all of the members that they've lost this year. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Jason. Uh, Julianne, you have any reports this evening?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So as most people know, um, the White Cliffs Committee have been working on finding a partner who could potentially help us restore the building um, and find a suitable use for it. So they have uh, been meeting quite frequently recently, and they most recently met, I think it was December twenty-first, where what we reviewed three proposals that we received, and two were um, voted on to move on to kind of the next round of discussion. So that meeting is this Thursday, January twelfth at nine AM in the Selectmen Room. It will be um, it it will be on cable TV, but um, the meeting is in person. So if anyone is interested, you'll have to come to the Select to the to the Selectmen Meeting Room or watch it on cable. Um, so we'll be discussing those two proposals. They're kind of quite different, actually. One is, one is a proposal for, I think it's fifty-two um, affordable housing units. um, affordable housing units with some use in the building for a community room. And the other is, um, event space restoration of the, um, the greenhouse and some smaller, like little saddle lake, like places for, uh, offices and businesses. So, um, that's what's happening with White Cliffs. Uh, other meetings that people hopefully will attend. The, um, the Dog Park Community Meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday night, uh, via Zoom, uh, from six to seven thirty PM. That's community input. And, um, also the MPIC is having a downtown revitalization community meeting, which will be held on Thursday, January 26th at the high school library from six thirty to eight. Unfortunately, we can't do, um, remote participation, but I hope a lot of people come and give their input there. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Uh, Scott, do you have any reports?
Uh, I don't need to. Thanks, Julianne. You got the, uh, Dog Park. I was going to mention that out of Parks and Rec, uh, for the meeting tomorrow. So, uh, folks interested in that can attend. There's a good, um, preliminary design that'll be, uh, reviewed, uh, at the meeting tomorrow. Uh, no other items to report.
Thank you, Scott. Um, most of the items I was going to, uh, cover were have already been covered. I will add that another event tomorrow evening is an open house at our library to, uh, recognize the, uh, the incoming director, Jen Bruno, who of course has been here for two years, but because it was, uh, during the worst of the pandemic, uh, we weren't able to recognize her then. It also recognizes a couple of other new hires and the, uh, the retirement of very long time, uh, an excellent library, uh, employee Deb Hirsch, uh, and, uh, we will have, uh, the library will have cupcakes and seltzer and, uh, other, other sweet and enjoyable things. Um, so I hope some of you can make it. That's, uh, from four thirty PM to six thirty PM, uh, at our library tomorrow, uh, Tuesday, January 10th. Um, I want to, uh, thank Jason Little, um, that he and I had a lengthy meeting a couple of weeks back, uh, before the holidays about the idea of having some, uh, some monthly financial reports in addition to the other reports that we get from department heads and, um, uh, he seemed, uh, very interested and willing to, to do that. I know, uh, John, he's going to be working with you on the specifics. Um, based on my conversations with him, we seem to think that, um, you know, hopefully by our next meeting, uh, towards the end of January, we might have, um, some, some monthly financial reports on the expense side. And, um, and then based on, on feedback and interests from the board members, uh, maybe get a little bit more detail, um, as, as that proceeds. Um, I think that's important for the board to be, uh, to be aware of the comings and goings of, of funds for the town. And I also want to, um, make mention that the Temporary Traffic Safety Committee had our first meeting just also just before, um, the holidays and it was very, very productive kickoff with the first thing that the committee is doing is gathering a lot of data from, uh, other towns throughout the Commonwealth that have the traffic safety committees or similar boards. And, um, to, uh, to, for in the future digest and, uh, and, and figure out what might work, if anything, for the town of Northborough. Um, uh, the next meeting, I represent this board on that. Our next meeting is January 24th. Um, and that concludes my reports, other than of course, the things that folks have already said. Um, next item on the business, uh, on the agenda. Oh, sure, John, sorry.
If I may, I did just want to make sure that everybody, uh, received the memo that went out. It's drafted by, uh, Scott Sharpentier. I know there was some media coverage, uh, but, uh, I wanted to be, uh, pleased actually to announce the Congressman McGovern's office indicated to us that, uh, earmarking the amount of four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars was received by the town. This is for the, uh, SCADA, the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System for our water and sewer. This is part of our cybersecurity standalone system allows Scott, his staff to remotely monitor our key infrastructure, our key water and sewer infrastructure. Um, we had done a couple of phases. Uh, the second phase was one that we had provided as a potential earmark. Um, Scott, working with our consultants was able to submit this and, um, I'm thankful that we were able to, uh, to receive it. There is a twenty percent, uh, match. And at this point, we're anticipating that the, uh, this will go on the, uh, be part of the FY twenty-four budget. And the, uh, twenty percent match would come out of, uh, basically fund balance for the water and sewer. So not only would there be no additional tax impact or fee impact for the, uh, rate users, obviously in the long run, uh, the fact that we don't have to finance or pay for, uh, these, uh, upgrades, uh, means that it'll help, uh, support and maintain, uh, current rates. So just a piece of, uh, good news in the federal ominous budget act. We don't see too many of those in Northborough. So it was a, it was a real bright spot for us. So.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I apologize him for not calling on you after the board members. Did, did you have anything else to add this evening?
That's it.
Okay. Very good. Um, and then is there any other business that, uh, comes before the board this evening before we open it up to public comments? All right. Are there any members of the audience that wish to, uh, to speak to anything at all? Uh, Carrie Martnik?
Hi, Carrie. Hello, hello. Carrie Martnik, sixteen Hemlock Drive. Um, I have a couple of questions. One is about, uh, municipal aggregation. So as I look at my electric bill, I see it's, um, higher than ever, three times higher. And I noticed that all the towns around us, Marlboro, Westboro, Southboro, Berlin, um, were part of municipal aggregation negotiations where even Marlboro is paying less than point zero nine five. Um, so they really didn't see the skyrocketing increase that Northborough saw. And I'm wondering, um, why Northborough didn't participate in these negotiations? Who would normally be responsible for that and why the decision was made to not participate? Um, as now I think the residents of Northborough are seeing close to one thousand dollar electric bills, um, as compared to our neighbors. So curious about that one.
If you have anything else, might as well conclude and then we'll see if, see if there's anything, uh, that anyone wants to respond.
No problem. Um, and then I was reading the paper and I caught, um, I realized you had a joint meeting. I wasn't able to attend it. Where we were, where we were presenting on, um, our financials and I noticed that it was projected that we would see a tax bill increased by four hundred and fifty-nine for fiscal year 2024 and an increase by nine hundred and ninety-three in fiscal 2025 when the fire station deck kicks in. I was wondering if that was accurate. That seems super high to increase by almost a thousand dollars. I wondered, um, if that was the case. And I guess it was already presented. So I'm not looking for the presentation again. I just wanted to confirm that. And it looked like there were quite a few items not included in that. So, and one of them was, uh, master plan project. So I'm wondering if there were, we're gonna, should we expect to see a delay in master plan implementation? Or is that something that we're still moving along on?
Okay. Um, John or anyone else if, if not obligated to answer questions from, uh, from the audience.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to. Let's start with the aggregation question. So I actually, um, brought forward, uh, to town meeting authorization to engage in a municipal aggregation program. Uh, this was something that was very, uh, popular a few years back. Um, unfortunately, what happened was the, you know, you're with, you're dealing with the commodities market. So what you don't hear about from all those programs was a period of time when, uh, their contracts were underwater, where the actual market prices were cheaper than what those aggregation contracts uh, were engaged for. So these things became very controversial. Uh, we did get authorization. I, I went to town meeting, sought authorization to do it. Um, and at that time, as I said, most of those contracts were underwater and therefore, um, it wasn't even feasible for us to, to, uh, go into an aggregation, uh, program. Uh, I'm, you know, unfortunately, you know, war breaks out in the Ukraine, a number of other things happen. You wind up with skyrocketing uh, costs. And so communities that had the programs in place lived through the period of time where their contracts oftentimes were underwater. Sometimes we're trying to get out from under, uh, some of the vendors that provide electricity to those communities actually went belly up. As a result, um, the Department of, of Energy, uh, had uh, delayed and wasn't allowing anybody then to enter into the contracts. There are a number of communities that are sitting trying to do something along those lines and it's up to a two-year delay. So, so the, uh, Department of, uh, Telecommunications and Energy, that's the correct, uh, uh, department, actually put a hold on these, uh, uh, types of aggregation contracts. So if you had one and you lived through the bad times, you're reaping the benefits of, of that now. Um, Becca Meekins actually did, uh, some research for us. We were looking at trying to do this. There's been some recent movement, um, uh, because a number of communities that were already in the queue could not get their aggregation contracts approved. And so there's been some, there's some, been some development movement there. But the bottom line is, um, uh, in order to do one of these contracts, you have to realize that there will be potentially times where your contract is underwater, uh, and sometimes when you can reap the benefits of that. So unfortunately, um, we got authorization at town meeting and at the time, as I said, you, we couldn't even enter into those contracts. So things have been delayed, uh, for approval at the state level. If and when this opens up or frees up, uh, we have authorization to move forward, but the market has to be, um, has to be willing to, to do that. It's kind of like, you know, reef trying to refinance, you know, your, uh, your house and you refinance your house and then the rates go down. Uh, that's what happened with a number of these contracts. So, uh, it's something that we are watching. If the market, uh, is such that it allows for this to be something that we could actually enter into with reasonable, you know, assurances that it won't have the opposite effect when the, um, market flips over. It's something that we can, we can take advantage of. Uh, but a number of these communities, uh, not that long ago were canceling or being dropped by the vendors or the residents were dropping the program because the open market was actually cheaper. So that's the difficulty when you're operating in a, in a commodities market and world events can trigger things that nobody anticipates. But so if you had one, the world went a little crazy, uh, they benefited. But what you don't hear about, uh, are the years when those contracts were in trouble and towns couldn't get them through. So when, uh, if the conditions change, we'll definitely, uh, be looking at that. As I said, we're authorized to do it. With regard to the forecast, uh, I encourage you to watch the presentation, uh, in detail because, uh, it is based on the projects that we have queued up in the capital plan and other projects. Uh, we do have some options. Uh, one of the discussions that we had with the board was regarding the use of ARPA money to, uh, manage some of these smaller or medium range projects like the Proctor Street, uh, school roof, um, the purchase of a fire engine as well as the DPW tight tank, uh, compliance that needs to take place. Um, so if, uh, we do use ARPA money to fund some of those projects, then yes, then that impact would be, would be less. So, uh, as of right now, that decision hasn't been made. So that is the forecast. Part of the reason why we go through this exercise is to show that based on the current information and the current assumptions, this is what it looks like. And, um, and it's important for all the policy boards and committees to see what those forecasts and projections look like based on decisions that we're contemplating. So there are things that can be done. Uh, and if they are, that those impacts would be lessened. Um, but if not, that's what we are, will be looking at. So it's important to have that information for the board. Again, these are forecasts based on assumptions that are laid out in the presentation in the slide. So I encourage you to look at those. Um, and, uh, and those assumptions are, you know, again, open for discussion as part of the policy discussions and the, uh, the votes that take place at the various financial boards and committees.
Um, and then, I, I just, sorry, you can, you can kick me out if you want. I just had, I had a comment that I didn't get to make before I got an answer, just regarding, um, go ahead, Mitch, excuse me.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, Gary.
Oh, um, just quickly, I'll send to the board. I want to make sure we don't rewrite, rewrite the history on thirty Forbes Road. So I, I went back and took a look at the minutes, starting with the board hearing on the June, June 27th, and I encourage the board to do the same, to really check the history and what happened with Forbes and the the permits and who reviewed it. When groundwater came in and I'll share that with the board in a separate memo. We don't need to go down it here, but um, I'd encourage members to make sure we don't, um, make certain claims about thirty-four that are not true. Anyway, thank you for your time and thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, uh, Julianne?
Um, can I make a comment on something Carrie asked about?
Sure.
Well, it's not really a comment. It's a question. When, when a community gets into one of these, um, electrical aggregation agreements, are, do they have the ability to, to say that they want a certain amount of the energy coming from sustainable areas like solar or wind or something like that? I, what control do you have over the, you know, where you're getting the electric, electricity from?
Right. So just so people are clear, we talk about aggregation. This is the differentiation between the distribution charges that are on your national grid build and, and the, and the supply, uh, charges. So yes, when you structure one of these, um, uh, programs, you do have the ability to, uh, opt in or out or make as a, as a potential option, depending how it's overall, how it's structured, you can, uh, select uh, renewable, uh, sources. Obviously it has a, uh, a pricing, uh, impact, um, depending on how you structure it. But yeah, that is part of what you can do with it.
Well, given, given, um, an uncertain future and the likelihood that our energy bills are go, going to be high, can, can we start looking at the possibility of that?
If, if I could, Julianne, rather than start a new agenda item that isn't actually on the agenda, I, I think your point is well taken. Um, following up from the public input, what I'd rather do is, um, see if we wanted to consider um, pu- putting this on a future agenda and, uh, discussing it a little, little bit more detail.
Okay, great.
Yeah. I mean, I had provided the board already with a memo, so you might want to refer back to that. That kind of gives you the status of where things are. But I do know there have been some regulatory updates, uh, recently because a number of communities that were close to pulling the trigger, uh, were hung up for, you know, upwards of two years, uh, with, before their programs would get approved. So we can provide an update to that memo if you like.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, I see no other members of the public wishing to comment. Uh, I believe we have an executive session this evening. Would someone like to make a motion to, uh, enter into said executive session?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, subsection three, collective bargaining, update on negotiations with the firefighter and police officer unions. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board. Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Uh, public session has ended at eight forty-seven PM. Uh, board and John, we'll see you, uh, in the executive session. Thank you very much, everybody.